To water.
Okay.
Meeting of the negotiation committee. The agenda is a review of the West memo of understanding. And I think we all have a copy of that, right?
I have it on my phone.
Yeah, I emailed a copy of it. I can put it on screen, too. It's not, it's not a big hidden.
Yeah, I have a question. So whatever I can ask, I would appreciate.
Okay, let's take a look at the document first.
So this is, a lot of the items that are in here are pretty much what is in the teachers one that we did, we didn't do an MOU with this union. This is the union that represents the secretaries, the custodians, paraprofessionals and the nurses. And so we're looking to do an MOU with them around, you know, COVID related items and then also for the board's sake is really around the utility, adding the utility staff and extending them through the end of the year. And the finance committee did say that they're, you know, they, they supported adding them. They met on Friday and they supported them finding, meaning financially, they believe there's money there. I shared them with the grant. And so basically, if we're going to just look at the items that are in here. If you want to go, do you want me to just go item by item here? What's the easiest way for me to do this?
I have one question to regard to the, the nurses are included in this, aren't they?
They are.
They're included when, because of the intensity of the job that they are doing, where they're right in the middle pandemic of COVID-19 in controlling this within the school. Wouldn't they have a separate, I know they're part of the unions, but wouldn't they have a different situation when it came to some of the things that are listed here?
So for the most part, and I can look at that from that lens when we go through Herb. The one item I know that's on here is making sure that they have appropriate PPE gowns, face masks, goggles. And we've provided all of those things. I actually worked with the nurses on those things. We keep stock of what we have. So if we have to order more. If a student goes into an isolation room or a staff member has to go into an isolation room, which is basically a sealed off room by themselves and the nurse has to enter that room. They go in in full safety gear. They go in with that gown, rubber gloves, face mask, face shield. They can wear goggles if they want instead of the face shield. It's up to them. But for the most part, they go in with a face shield. So they have the additional PPE. All of that is used one time and then it's tossed. It gets thrown away. And so that's, you know, our agreement with them is to provide that, the proper equipment.
She has that, but isn't that available to all the unit members?
It is if they want it, yes.
They're working with students.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Are they expensive, those PPEs?
I mean, the masks are just typical surgical masks. The face shields are not terribly expensive, but you know, sometimes they're harder to find. There's more PPE available now. But they have plenty of gowns. They have plenty of items. The hardest item right now is shifted from masks to gloves. Gloves are actually harder to come by and the price has quadrupled. And so that's the one item that we make sure we stay on top of because we go through a lot of rubber gloves, whether it's between cleaning or the nurses.
Okay, let me get one question.
Yes, I have a few questions, but like concerning this particular, but your question, so who else? This, this contract, who else is included in this contract? So nurses, who else? Can you like name?
Yep, it's the nurses, paraprofessionals, custodians and secretaries. It's, and I always say this is a bit of an odd group because sometimes they have different needs, but they're within the same bargaining unit.
So those are additional secretaries towards what we have now, additional custodians?
No, that's, they are our custodians. They are our secretaries. They're unionized.
So they are our people who work for us for a long time. So then why do we need an additional contract with them? I thought we have the contract for the whole year.
We do. And this is just like the teachers because it's so specific to COVID. The, the memorandum of understanding basically is saying, here's what we're going to do. You know, to, to make sure you're safe, to make sure it works for your bargaining unit and also to make sure it works for the district. We couldn't add in the utility staff into their bargaining unit without an agreement with them. And that's what, you know, that's what this is. And again, I'm sorry, I just wanted to share to make sure I put on the chime in case yeah, joins. And that's why it's like, the majority of the things in here, if I'm just going through, you know, this is, this is something that they were worried about. They were worried if they were going to lose their jobs if we went remote. And that's not the case. We still have to provide services. We still have to provide, you know, special education services for paraprofessionals. Nurses still have all the same level state reporting they have to do. They're still getting phone calls in like last week when we were remote. They were getting phone calls. They worked. They were in the building and they were working on their filing and tracking all of the stuff that's related to COVID. They're still responsible to do that. And so, you know, they're, they're still doing their jobs. The one that's the hardest that I've said really can't work remote is custodians and they're in anyways. They're coming in. So, you know, they, basically this says if they're, if they're doing their job, they're going to get paid. Well, that's, you know, that's not, I don't think that's earth shattering. That's what, what is expected by both sides. You know, that we're following Department of Public Health, we are, you know, any of the guidelines that they, they put out, we're following. And, you know, if we see an update, I'm sure you saw CDC recently is talking about the potential for moving the number of quarantine days from 14 days to 10 days or even seven. We won't adopt that unless the Connecticut Department of Public Health adopts that. And then we will make sure we follow that. So they're basically just asking us to make sure we're following those things. Yes, Elena?
Yeah, if we can, could you please come to the number two?
Yeah.
Just for clarifying. So what happened with custodians back in March when, when we just stopped schools, schools? In person, they can, we continue to pay them.
They, and they worked, yeah.
And they are all our regulars, all those people, nothing, nobody is additional COVID, for COVID hired. They are all our regular employees.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we have our, we have utility employees that we haven't hired yet, right Phil?
And they're not part of this union yet.
They're not part of this union, but we still have an MOU with them.
With who?
The utility.
I have contracts, I have individual contracts with each of the utility members, but they are not members of any.
They're not members of the union yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we could only do that for a certain number of days legally. And that's why we had the December cutoff so that we're under that number of days legally. And then at that point, I would have to, you know, we would have to add them to a bargaining unit and it would be this bargaining unit.
Right.
Okay.
Any questions on number three?
No, I have a number five.
Okay, the, the health assessment number four is typical. Everyone's doing that, including families. Number five, we're notifying basically everyone. So, you know, when, when we have a positive case or we have a positive case outside of school and we have a student or staff member that's close contact, we notify all of our families and we notify all of our staff. This is no different. They're, they're responsible when that happens for them to come back. They have to show as proof of a negative test to be able to come back or they have to quarantine for a certain number of days. So if they're sick, they have to quarantine for that number of days. And that's, again, directly connected to the Department of Public Health guidance. Yes, Elena?
Yes, well, my question about the third word, the board may require. It sounds like we require, and I personally prefer just to put requires, the board require any bargaining unit to produce without may because may gives a space. What do you think?
The only reason, Elena, the may, go ahead Herb, sorry.
We can change that to shall.
The reason that's may is because if they get an alternate diagnosis, and this is part of the DPH's guidelines. If they have a, say, you know, I have symptoms of COVID-19. I go to my doctor's office and I do a strep throat test and I have, I'm diagnosed with strep. They're not going to require me to, to produce, you know, the, a COVID-19 test. They're just going to identify me as strep.
Yeah, but it says here after a positive test or quarantine. So it's kind of, it's all related to COVID-19. So if there was a positive test at any point, other person was on quarantine, then I think there should be requirement.
Let's make it a shall.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think you're right. Shall. And I'm just going to highlight changes so I can share them with, I've worked with the president of the union on this.
Sure.
And bring it to produce the results of COVID-19 test. Yep, okay. Number six. This is just, again, and this is not just schools, folks, where the courts have said that basically businesses are responsible for providing appropriate PPE. And so that's why we have it available. If somebody wants to wear their own, they can, but we have it available. So that's number six.
Is that available through the nurse's office?
Correct. That's, it's the easiest way to maintain it Herb, so they can keep track of our inventory. And they provide me with an ongoing inventory to make sure if we're getting low on something, they have enough time to order and get new.
Right, okay.
Number seven basically just says that they have an appropriate break release time. So that means if they have a lunch period, we have to make sure they continue to have that lunch period and we're doing that. We would actually be in violation of the contract if we didn't do this without that statement.
How long do they get? About 45 minutes?
No, not even. I think they get 30, yeah.
30 minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
I actually have no questions except number 13.
Do you want me to go through any of these other ones Herb, or you want to jump to 13?
Yeah, just give them through the rest of them, don't.
Okay, so eight is basically, you know, somebody says something that we're not going to go, go give them a hard time. We wouldn't do that. We want to know if there's any areas where we can improve with safety. Number nine. You know, that they are going to share, you know, that we're going to share the information if, if, if they, if we know there's someone that's test positive and they should do the same thing for us and that we're going to keep it confidential. Number 10 is that, you know, they're not going to be required to do any medical assessments except for the nurse, which again makes sense.
How do you determine whether you're going to close down again? Because we'll probably be opening and closing over the rest of the year.
Yeah, we'll see. So.
We have, if we have any COVID-19 cases or we can't supply the staff.
So it's, yeah, it's a couple of things. If we get information from Eastern Highlands Health District that basically says, look, you have a ton of cases in Wellington. You have an outbreak in one of your schools or both of your schools. We would work with them and we would, we would close. Their original assessment of what, you know, a certain number of cases would move to remote learning. They've now changed that and they have updated guidance because they're seeing that there's not spread happening within schools because of the mitigation strategies that are in place, the mask wearing, the hand washing, the social distancing, all of those things. So even if someone comes to school and they're positive for COVID-19, they're not seeing that person transmitting COVID-19 to others. So that allows us to stay open longer. The last closure again was because of staff. You know, when you have to quarantine and you're wait, even though you have, you know, you're waiting on a test. I was just talking to a staff member this morning who had one of her parents' tests and it was, it was over 10 days that they were waiting for results. And so if they can't come back to work with, if they've had symptoms, you know, a negative test. And so that's, that's important. And so that's the, you know, the reason that we probably would end up closing again.
In the opening of school, the board doesn't seem to have very, very much of a role in that. Is, was that a declaration by the governor that the superintendent and the health new Eastern Health Service would make a decision in that regard is a.
They basically said it's local control. So we have in local control, meaning, you know, could be the Board of Education with the superintendent. Some districts are, you know, more involved than in other districts. It's just the superintendent. I treat it just like a snow day. So, you know, you pay me to make those decisions and that's, you know, we, we get the information from Eastern Highlands. We look at all of our data and that's why I share out all that information with staff and families. So they know this is why this decision was made. And how we move forward.
Yeah.
But you would be meeting a lot.
Mark Comerson, if the board had to get involved.
Correct, because, and Herb, the, the main reason for that is if, if I had a notification in 10 minutes that there was three cases in one of our schools and I had to wait for a Board of Education meeting to be able to close. It would be, you know, we'd have to post an agenda. It would be at least 24 hours before we could close. That wouldn't make sense. You would want to be able to announce right away, we're going to close tomorrow for contact tracing. It could extend beyond that. So that's, that's the reason why.
It might be a good idea to let board members know too. Because when you did close last time, I had a lot of phone calls and people want to know why it was closing. And so I really didn't have a definitive answer and, you know.
I think, didn't I share the letter with the board, the closure letter with the board? I think I emailed it.
Yeah, but I'm not in front of my computer all day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, you didn't mail it. I'm not, I don't remember the timing though, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could put out a phone messenger or something just to let the board members know.
That would be a good, good idea with a phone messenger for the extreme situations like that again.
Yeah. I'm just making a note. Boy, the sun all of a sudden has peeked through into my office here. Okay, so number 11. Modifications, yeah, we just are notifying them if we have any changes. Number 12, we notify them when there's a positive test or a positive case. Number 13, this is basically comes to the Family Medical Leave Act and there's actually a coronavirus act as well that we have to assess and they have to have medical documentation. If there's someone that is at higher risk and they have medical documentation, we have to provide appropriate accommodations. This is on a case by case basis and we have to meet the Americans with the Disabilities Act. I have not had anyone from this particular union ask for accommodations, but we have from the teachers' union and with the appropriate documentation, we've provided those an accommodation that is appropriate.
Yeah, you answered my question. Thank you.
No problem. Number 14. This, all of the 14 A, B and C is, it's the other side of the thing. Is directly connected to adding the utility staff to, thank you so much. Adding the utility staff to this union. And what I did not want to have happen was to add this, the utility staff to this union forever. The utility staff are specifically related to COVID-19 and the additional things that we need to do that are around delivering lunches. Look at, if COVID's not there, we're not delivering lunches to classrooms. They're going to eat in a cafeteria. All of the additional cleaning that we're doing right now doesn't happen during the day if COVID-19 is not around. Having these people being able to sub and doing any of the things, if we need bus monitors this morning to get our, our elementary students' bins back to school. We put a utility staff member on each of our buses to help those, you know, a five-year-old get their bin onto the bus and then off of the bus. Without those people, those types of things don't happen. When we closed, I called them in on a Sunday and they came in and they're the ones that took all the bins with the custodians, all of the bins from the classrooms. They organized them down for pickup at both schools and they were the ones that did all the distribution. So without these people, you know, it's, it's, it's really hard to continue the level of, you know, tasks that need to be completed. You know, to, as, as we stay open.
Well, there are going to be three utility workers, right?
Correct.
Are they going to be able to perform this or no?
So we, yeah, so we initially thought the safe number would be six when we started this at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
We never were able to fill all six positions. At one point, we filled five. Two of those people have actually joined this union and gone on to be paraprofessionals for us. And so what we have right now is we have like, what I'll call 3.8. We have one person who's doing classes on her own college level classes. And so she doesn't work a, a full week all the time. We believe that three is a, a good number, that it will meet our needs. And financially, we can afford three.
Right.
And that's why, you know, three is, we ran the numbers with, with Amanda of the cost of what it would be for the remainder of the year if we were to need them. And we know that the grant money is there to do it. If it were four, we'd have to figure out where the rest of the money would come for that fourth person. But I believe three is a good number.
So we have enough money to fund for the rest of the year, fund these decisions.
Correct.
Building a budget, are we going to anticipate continuing them next year, for example? Because even though everything of our vaccine for this virus is still not going to be 100% until another year is passed really before everyone's vaccinated and, and this whole virus is under control hopefully.
Yeah, it's a really good question Herb. So this, basically this MOU takes, creates this position through June of 2021. But I think from our budgeting standpoint, we probably should budget for them. And again, only, you only fill these positions. I only fill these positions if COVID is still an issue and we're still required to do the cleaning. Once that is gone, I, I don't support the main maintaining of these positions. It just doesn't make sense. But we could, you know, we'll get to that when we get to budgeting. But again, we would have to do another MOU to extend it beyond, you know, June of, of this date. It wouldn't work in the summertime. It would basically be a, a position where if, if we extended it, I think we would recommend, I would recommend doing it just like we did this year. August, we would extend it to December of 2021. And then if we had to extend it beyond that, which I hope we don't have to, we could.
So the, the three workers know that this is the way we're arranging it. In other words, they'll go end of the year and possibly, you know, into the next year too.
So they know that their contract only takes them through the end of this month around December 23rd, I think.
Right.
What they don't know is, is, and I, I've shared with them, I've just asked to see if they're interested in continuing on. They are. They just don't know that, you know, the number of positions we'll have and, and who will be able to move on and how we'll make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Anne's joining on her phone. Hi Anne. Are you with us Anne?
Sorry about that, go ahead.
It's okay. I think Anne just joined us too.
Oh, good.
I'm going to stop sharing for a second. Oh, she might not be able to unmute, sorry.
Oh, there she is.
Yes, unmuted you Anne, sorry.
Hello Anne.
Hi Anne.
Hi.
I'm just going to go back to this. And we were just talking about the addition of the utility staff. And the potential need to budget for next year if COVID continues, but we just don't know yet. But at this point, this MOU would take the utility staff into the end of this year, June of 21. You can hear us Anne?
Yes, I'm trying to crank up my volume.
Okay. Perfect.
Go ahead, I can hear you. Oh, you know what? I had my earphones ready.
There you go.
My daughter's going to be getting in the car, so I figure I'll put the earphones on to keep it confidential.
We've gone through all, and it's a public meeting too. But we've gone through all of the items except for basically number 15. Anyways, Anne, I don't know if you had any questions about any of the items that were sent out?
No, did this meeting start at two or 1:30?
1:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've just been sitting in the car. Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
No, I did not have any questions. I read it over earlier today.
So what, the, the, basically the last item that just says that, you know, we can't use this against the union in negotiations and they basically cannot use, use it against us, the board of that. When we go to negotiations. They have not approved this. They have not voted on this yet. So they have it at their, I, I think our, our local president is happy where it lies right now. And so am I, to be, to be honest. But they will have to determine if, you know, their, their higher ups will have to determine, see if they want to weigh in on anything. And then they would have to vote on this to approve. The board could vote on this and approve it as is. And then if they recommend any changes, we can make some adjustments from there. It would only adjust some minor thing.
Okay. So if ever, everyone is in agreement, we will offer this to the board and recommend its adoption.
If that's, if there's no questions and there's no other items that, yeah, you would want to weigh in on this. And obviously our attorney has looked at this as well. That would be, that would, what would, I would be looking for.
Okay, Elena, is that okay with you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, Anne?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I will, I will make that one edit with the shall in there. I will share that with the union, their union president. And then what I'll do is I'll, I'll email this. I'm still going to call a draft because, you know, it could be adjusted. But at least we have something to put in front of the board tomorrow night. And the most important piece is really around the utility staff. Because without the addition of this, we would have to do that at, you know, separate meeting for them to continue on.
So Anne, we made one editorial change in number five. We changed may to shall.
Okay, thank you.
I'll require, I think that was the only change.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that was the only thing on the agenda. If you're, you're good to go with that.
Phil, I did have one question. You mentioned in there three utility people or did you have more?
Yeah, I was, I was explaining that to Herb and Elena. So we, we had originally planned for six. We were never able to fill all six positions. We filled five at one point for a short period of time. We ended up hiring two of those people into this union as paraprofessionals.
Oh, good, yeah.
And so we were down to three and then we added one, we actually added a, a person to the student. And so she's able to fulfill a bunch of her hours. She's about 0.8. And so I, number one, financially, we have enough to support three positions. And number two, I believe that we have enough, three people would be enough for us to do the, the level of support that we're looking for and around support with, and really it's around cleaning and coverage. Those are the two primaries right now.
Did they ride, ride the bus today and pick up bins?
They did. We had a person on every bus.
Yep, very good.
And it worked, it, it worked out very well.
Uh huh, very, very good, thank you.
Okay, so we have to wait until they, they agree to do it soon, right, Phil?
You can vote on it before they do and then they would have to, you know, they would have to adjust if we want to make any adjustments from there. You know, but if the board approves, you could, you could approve it and then they would have to, they have to agree well for us to move forward with it. But they know that the utility piece is important.
Well, after the board, if they agree with it tomorrow, I will drop by and sign. And you can send it to the.
Yeah. We're hoping that Nicole Page is their union president and she's been trying to get ahold of them just to say, we know their typical, their normal rep is, is out until I think it's the 14th. They're trying to get the, the next level up to approve on their end, so. All right.
Okay, Elena, you're all set?
I'm totally all set, thank you.
Do you want to do?
Anne, okay?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, if, in that case, I will adjourn the meeting at 2:00.
Perfect. All right, thanks all.
Great day to you all guys.
Have a good day, I'll see you tomorrow.
Bye.